Good evening and welcome to the September 25th meeting of the Revere City Council. Will everybody rise and salute the flag, please?
Roll call of the members, Councilor Cogliandro.
Here.
Here, Councilor Morabito.
Here.
Here, Councilor Novoselski is absent, Councilor Powers.
Here.
Here, Councilor Rizzo.
Here.
Here, Councilor Sorino.
Here.
Here, Councilor Silvestri.
Here.
Here, Councilor Visconti.
Here.
Here, Councilor Zambudo.
Here.
Here, and President Protampor McKenna.
Here.
Here, Quorum is present. Approval of the Journal of the Regular Meeting of September 11th.
All in favor, all opposed, so ordered, accepted.
Madam President, I have personal privilege.
Councilor Silvestri.
Thank you, Madam President. Ladies and gentlemen, I am here to announce a very sad moment for our community. Over the weekend, we found out some heartbreaking information of a friend, a coworker, and a resident, Christopher Albert, passed. For those of you who may not know, Chris was a community health outreach worker for the city of Revere. During the pandemic, I had the privilege of working side by side with Chris when the veterans in the Substance Use Division Office created a program to provide homeless outreach. I will tell you firsthand, there is no amount of training, schooling, or professional development that can teach someone how to love unconditionally without judgment, the way Chris did. Especially in those conditions. The only profession I can compare to what Chris did would be an NGO worker in a third-world country. For over two decades, Chris worked tirelessly on issues related to substance misuse and homelessness on an individual and a systemic level, and has made lasting impact on communities he served. If you go on social media, you will read countless posts from individuals sharing of how Chris saved theirs or a family member's lives. You'll hear stories how Chris was among the pioneers in the harm reduction field and was a movement across the community. Despite his soft voice and calm demeanor, Chris was a fierce advocate fighting on behalf of almost vulnerable people in our community, and the world is a darker place today without him. I'd like to take a moment of silence in honor of Chris Alba, please.
Calendar item number three, the Revere City Council award a certificate of commendation to Phil Imperato in recognition of his 90th birthday. I've been informed that Mr. Imperato is unable to attend tonight's meeting, and Councilor Zambudo would like to reschedule this for October 16th.
Councilor Zambudo, would you like to say anything?
I'll save my comments. Phil Imperato, a 90-year-old veteran, wonderful person, looking forward to giving him this certificate. It just seems like it's taken forever to get it to him, but on the 16th, I believe we will give it to him. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor.
Public hearings, calendar item number four. Hearing called is ordered on repealing section 9.12.030, posting political signs of the revised ordinances of the city of Revere, whereas the ordinance is content-based and unconstitutional by violating the First Amendment pursuant to the Supreme Court's decision on Reed versus the Town of Gilbert.
We're going to open it up to proponents. Any proponents like to speak? Come up to the podium. No proponents. We're going to close that. Opponents? We'll open it up to opponents. Anybody want to speak on this? We'll close that side. City councilors? Anybody like to speak? Councilor Silvestri.
Thank you, Madam President. Madam President, I think this is a great amendment, and I believe in the First Amendment wholeheartedly. I do have a question about maybe possibly putting something in place where no 4x8s on homes, or no structures built to hold signs, or if you're going to build a structure to hold a sign, maybe have a license or something like that, because people are building structures now on their front lawns to put up billboards, and it's just not a good look. I think homes should have smaller signs, businesses, and parking areas and stuff are allowed 4x8s, but I think that's where we should do it, but if that would be against the First Amendment, then I guess I would be against that as well.
Any other councilors? Councilor Cogliandro.
Thank you, Madam President. I totally agree with Councilor Silvestri on this one. You know, I still believe that this is about accountability, and at the beginning of the next election, when the ballot is set, we should get every candidate, every incumbent in this room for a public meeting and make a decision together on when signs should go out and when they should be taken, and that way it'll be done in a public forum, and we don't have a mess of signs all over the place when they're not supposed to be all over the place. So, I also know that Councilor Novoselski wanted to speak on this as well tonight. I know it's going to Legislative Affairs, but he's celebrating Yom Kippur, and that's it. Thank you.
Any other councilors? Okay, we're going to refer this to Legislative Affairs.
Calendar item number five, hearing called is ordered on a loan order in the amount of $4 million for water main replacement bonds.
This is a public hearing. We're going to start with proponents. Anybody like to come up and speak? Proponents? Please state your name and address.
Good evening. Richard Viskey, 281 Broadway, City CFO. I'm here to speak in support of the bond authorization. As you may recall, as part of the fiscal year 2024 budget, this was in the capital plan as an item that needed to be bonded. We have appropriated all the money for the pay-as-you-go capital, and these next two bond orders are for the water main replacement and drainage in the city. And I do have some documents to pass out to the council for their benefit, but I'm happy to answer any questions on that behalf. Thank you. Just for your benefit, the city did invest in some software. It's called Debt Book, and what we've done over the past years, we've loaded all of our debt into the software, which allows us now to create some neat little debt schedules and charts and graphs about existing debt. So, before you, this evening, for your benefit, what I've given you is all the principal and interest payments on the Water and Soil Enterprise Fund from fiscal year '24 right down to fiscal year 2053, and a couple of graphs behind that on the existing debt. And then the last two pages of that are pro forma debt schedules for the proposed $4 million and $2 million. So, hope this helps everybody with the presentation, and like I said, happy to answer any questions on this. Thank you.
Thank you. Proponents? State your name and address, please.
Don Charmilla, 215 Rice Ave, Revere. So, these projects, the water main replacement, it entails 18 streets. It's one of the biggest water replacement projects the city has undertaken. It's over three miles of water main replacement. I'll go through the list of streets. Harris Street, Butler Street, Elm Street, Norman Street, Lowell Street, Library Street, Sewell Street, Bixby, Harrington Street, Lowell Street Place, Zola Circle, Haddon Street, Victoria Street, Mill Street, Mill Street Place, Hale Street, Eaton Street, and Bayview Street. This is a project that we identified years ago because of undersized lines, old lines, tuberulated lines, and one of the reasons why, there's a lot of history of breaks in this area, but one of the biggest reasons of replacing this area is to deliver volume. So, I think the council has heard me speak about volume before. Pressure, you know, the pressure, you know, is reasonably fine throughout the city with new water main replacements that have the ability to hold 350 psi. We have the ability to ask the MWA to dial up some of the PIVs that they have that feed us, five that feed us at the city of Revere. Right now, our city mains can't really hold more than 80 or 100 pounds when they're supposed to maintain, when they're supposed to be able to handle 350 psi. With this new water main replacement, we'll be able to ask MWA to dial up their PIVs to deliver us more pressure to the city, and also to be able to deliver more volume. So, in the case of a fire, the firefighters have ample water to be able to extinguish fires. Another part of this bond order is also for drainage. Drainage issues, there's two that we've identified that, one that's been plaguing the city for many years. It's on Fennel Street, at the top of Penn. We have drainage that comes down from Suffolk and from Ridge Road that comes downhill, and it comes down with such velocity that it kind of surcharges the manhole on Fennel Street and floods people that are on Fennel Street. Also, part of this funding is to add to the drainage infrastructure in Revere. One area that we identified was in North Revere, an area that goes up Liberty Street. The existing drain main that goes up Liberty Street only goes up about 150 feet. From there, it just terminates, and then there's no drainage up Liberty Street to Grand View Ave to Paul Street. So, what we're going to do with this is extend the drainage up from Liberty onto Grand View and onto Paul. So, that's another project that we want to fund.
Thank you. Any other proponents would like to speak? Okay, we're going to close that side. Opponents? Any opponents? Going to close that side. Any city councilors have questions? Councilor Visconti.
Thank you, Madam President. Donnie, if you've got a second? I know the area around Sewell Street has some major flooding issues. Is that going to fix those problems? Because I know, is that going to fix the issue over there, you think?
So, the project that I identified tonight was water main replacement. 16 streets, the 17th being Harris, the 18th being Olive Beach. That's water main replacement. So, when we first identified this neighborhood for infrastructure replacement and street and sidewalk reconstruction, the way we follow the program is we first, we invite National Grid in to replace cast iron gas mains, because the majority of the gas that they deliver to residents that are on the, that utilize natural gas gets lost through the cast iron mains. Leaks through the gas iron mains through the asphalt, and basically is pretty much a greenhouse gas methane. So, what we're going to, we invite them in to replace the cast iron gas mains. After that, we follow with water main replacement. That's what we're doing now. After that, we follow drainage replacement or upgrades. We do have engineering services for drainage improvements in this area. We actually found, identified some little issues that we think corrected a lot of the flooding problems, but as a whole, we're going to address the drainage in there after this water project. After the water project, we go in and repave streets and sidewalks.
If I can follow up, you're saying after?
Water main replacement.
Water main replacement.
Yeah, after water main.
Which will end up fixing the issue.
Yes.
Okay.
So, then, once we leave that street, once we've done all, so once we addressed, you know, gas main replacement, once we addressed water main replacement, we follow up with drain main either improvements or installation. Yeah, something, you know, kind of two-thirds of the city doesn't have adequate drainage, so.
Agreed. I guess my concern here is, I know the residents on Sewell Street are anxious, anxiously awaiting this resolution. How long before this actually takes place?
If I could assist, Mr. Charmilla, we do have, as part of the fiscal year 2025 budget, $3.5 million for drainage in the Sewell Street area, so that will be the next leg, and it's in the capital plan as fiscal year 2025 repair.
So, that's next, we're talking next year is what we're looking at?
Subject to approval of a bond.
To actually finalize the people down at Sewell Street? Is that what we're understanding?
Yeah, so in the capital plan was $3.5 million for drainage improvements and replacement down, or installation of drainage for that same area that we identified two years ago. So, once that's done, we go in with, you know, with street and sidewalk, either replacement, improvement, mill and pave, or regrade, and then pretty much it's a brand-new neighborhood. So, and then at that point in time, there's no need to dig in the street. So, there's no need, there should be no need except for new services, emergency repairs. Other than that, everything's going to be pretty much new in the street.
So, the people in Sewell Street should just realize that it'll probably take another year. They're a year away.
It's unfortunate, but, you know, it was a hard decision. You know, we understand people are, you know, have been experiencing flooding that area for many years. But when you're tasked with what to do first, it's a hard decision, but, you know, kind of an easy one when you see a water main that's tuberulated down to, from six inches down to two, and I know I'm not delivering enough water. And, you know, I've talked to firefighters that are on hydrants, and they're saying, you know, we're not getting enough water. Well, I mean, I'm not holding a water lever back. What's happening is you just can't convey enough water through that very, very small tuberculated pipe. So, I understand flooding is absolutely an inconvenience. Nobody likes it, but for safety reasons, I think being able to deliver enough water to a neighborhood to extinguish a fire is more important, because, you know, if a hydrant can't deliver 500, 1,000 really gallons per minute, then there's a problem. Anything under 500 is critical.
Understand completely. No worries. I just wanted to let them know that they're about a year away. It's more information.
It's been in the capital, we've had it in the capital plan. We, you know, it was in last year's capital plan.
Absolutely.
It's there, as long as we can, you know, as long as we, we've already identified the issue. We've already started the engineering for it. It's now, it's at the point is just finalize the engineering and putting it out to the street for bid.
Great. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Powers.
Thank you, Madam President. Donnie, I know very well, and I intend to support this, the circumstances down in that area. I did represent that area for 19 years, and there's times down there when it was flooding on the streets, water main breakage, everything else. I've seen some of the pipes that have come out of some of the other areas, and I agree 100%. You've got a six-inch pipe that now maybe is delivering two inches of water. And it's not only for people that live in the area that need that water pressure in their homes, but also, as you said, for the firefighters in the city. We, to get pressure out of those hydrants, you have to deliver volume. It's plain and simple. And I think this is a great investment for the city, and it's going to go well with the taxpayers down there. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Powers. Councilor Silvestri.
Donnie, thank you very much, and I know you've been dealing with this since you started here in Revere and taking this on very seriously. How many more projects do you see like this in the city?
Good question, because I just wanted to add something. With money that was approved by the city council, we are able to actually start, and we're having a pre-con meeting on Thursday for a project that's already funded, engineered, already funded, and already out to bid, and already awarded, for a major project, which was a project for an area we identified with, you know, and you could, you know, talk to the neighbors, I'll tell you, an area which is Howard Street, Oxford, Rand, and McLevy. Sorry, I apologize. I thought I put it in silent. So, this area, we identified as very low flow, 500 gallons and less, you know, gallons per minute out of hydrants in that area. There is no water line at McLevy. We are putting a water mount line in McLevy. Howard Street's a dead end. Rand Street's a dead end, and Oxford was a dead end, because we found a broken gate at the top of Oxford Mountain that had been broken for many years. So, essentially, there was no circulation. You were being fed down Park Ave, up Oxford, kind of stopped there because the gate was broken, went down Rand, stopped there because the line didn't continue. Howard stopped there because the line didn't continue. It's all tuberulated. So, we have a pre-con meeting this Thursday. We, the contractor wanted to stop Monday. We have notifications to put out. We have a pamphlet to deliver. We notify the city council of the project, obviously, but then we have to put, you know, door hangers to notify people of, you know, we're in town, construction's going to happen. Sorry for the inconvenience, but, you know, you know, there'll be water main replacement this year. And so, like, you know, streets that you find it's odd that Revere's old, and you have streets that don't have water mains in them. McLevy doesn't have water main in it. It doesn't run from Park Ave to Mountain Ave to create a redundancy. So, I mean, it's odd that I ran across these problems, but, you know, the reality, and they're being addressed.
Thank you very much.
Any other councilors? Okay, we're going to close that.
Sorry, another, to answer the other question. North Shore Road. We're replacing North Shore Road. Job is, the money was authorized through this council. Job was put out to bid. Job was awarded. So, from basically Butler Circle down to Revere Street will be replaced. That's been a line that's plagued the city for many years. There's been numerous breaks, and when that breaks, we're holding up traffic on 1A. And that's created a tremendous amount of inconvenience, not only for the city residents, but, you know, for the whole city as a whole.
Donnie, we appreciate the work you've been doing.
Thank you.
Yes, we do.
Thank you.
We're going to close this road call.
Road call. Shall the city council approve a loan order in the amount of $4 million for water main replacement bonds? Councilor Cogliandro?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Morabito?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Novoselski is absent. Councilor Powers?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Rizzo?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Sorino?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Silvestri?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Visconti?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Zambudo?
Yes.
Yes, and President Protam McKenna?
Yes.
Yes, the loan order has been approved. Calendar item number six, hearing called is ordered on a loan order in the amount of $2 million for stormwater drainage system bonds.
This is a public hearing. We're going to start with proponents. Proponents, state your name and address, please.
Richard Viskey, 281 Broadway, City CFO. I think we lumped in the drainage project with the water main description at the last public hearing, but again, these are bond authorizations that were requested as part of the 2024 Capital Improvement Plan. Again, this is part of a multi-year capital improvement plan. These are the fiscal year 2024 initiatives to repair and install drainage in the city. I can have Donnie explain all the areas that are lacking drainage, and there are, like the Sewell Street area is on the capital plan for next year, and then we have another $4.5 million for another drainage project down in 2027. But, Councilor Zambudo, we did introduce these a couple weeks ago, and they went to public hearing, so I don't think this is the first hearing. I'm not sure about the ordinance, but we are hoping to get these passed so that we can sign the contract.
Madam President, if I might.
Speak.
The ordinance is for a financial analysis. You gave us one, so that circumvents it anyway.
Oh, okay.
So, you've already done what was, would have been called for.
Okay.
That's why I voted yes.
Happy to hear it. Thank you. That's my part of the public hearing. Thank you.
Madam President, one question.
Councilor Visconti.
Thank you. The schedule you gave us, the $6 million is in addition to this, this balance, correct?
No, yeah, the cover sheet, the first sheet on this is the existing debt for.
Which is about 57, is that 5 million?
That's right. The 5.7 million is the principal, the 2.1 is the interest. Yeah, yeah, yeah. But if these want approved, they will, we will add it to the software, and it'll recalculate these schedules.
Okay, so we'll be at 11, if my numbers are correct, roughly. 11.7.
Yeah, again, but the cover sheet is only contemplating the one-year worth of payment, so that schedule, you see on the back, the 30 years will then flow through 30 years. So, it may not be at 11 on the first year, but through the 30 years, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Proponents? Anybody else would like to speak? Okay, we're going to close that side. Opponents? Would anybody like to speak, opponents? Going to close that side. City councilors? Anybody have a question? We're going to close that.
Road call.
Road call.
Shall the city council approve a loan order in the amount of $2 million for stormwater drainage system bonds? Councilor Cogliandro?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Morabito?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Novoselski is absent. Councilor Powers? Yes, Councilor Rizzo?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Sorino?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Silvestri?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Visconti?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Zambudo?
Yes.
Yes, and President Protam McKenna?
Yes.
Yes, the loan order has been approved. Calendar item number seven, hearing called is ordered on the application of Broadway Capital, CDPM Inc., 133 Salem Development LLC, requesting a special permit from the Revere City Council to alter the existing special permit, C2201, by increasing the number of affordable units within the permitted 72-unit mixed-use development from seven units to 18 units, consisting of six units at 70% AMI and 12 units at 80% AMI at 133 Salem Street.
This is a public hearing. We're going to start with proponents. Any proponents? State your name and address, please.
Good evening, councilors. Tom Skrowski, Chief of Planning and Community Development for the city, 281 Broadway. Just wanted to speak briefly in support of this project, 133 Salem Street. This does not look substantially different than what the city council had passed previously but for one provision related to the affordability of the units. When the council originally approved this, it called for seven affordable units, and this proposal seeks to increase the number of affordable condo units to 18. This is in part a discussion that the developer, Broadway Capital, had had with Mass Housing through their Commonwealth Builder Program, which is helping to fund this, and is certainly something I think we'd like to encourage in the city. So, 18 affordable condo units would represent an 1,800% increase in the number of affordable homeownership opportunities we have in Revere. That's a fancy way of saying, out of the 24,000-plus units of housing we have in the city, currently we have one affordable homeownership unit. So, this is a significant opportunity to expand our affordable stock. I certainly support this work, and I guess two sort of practical items that might be helpful for this project, because the developer, Mr. Vieno, who will be speaking in just a moment, is going in. is going in front of Mass Housing for an application, um, review later in early October. I think two things would be really critical to show, um, Mass Housing that this project has the support of the City Council. Number one would be a partial waiver of the CIT funding. Um, I believe there's in excess of $270,000 of CIT. Some of it paid, some of it that's still outstanding going towards this project. Um, and Mass Housing is looking for evidence of local support that helps make the application more competitive. So showing a partial waiver of the CIT funds, I think would go a long way to showing that support. And I think just generally showing the City Council's support of projects like this that only by their own volition are looking to include affordability in this project. Um, secondly, if it were possible, considering the substance of this application is not that different than what was approved previously, if it would be possible to have the public hearing and then have this actually voted on this evening.
Point of information cannot happen. That's, the special permit has to go to committee.
Okay. I raised the question, and I heard the answer. So it, I guess then just the one point about CIT funding would be the main one, just even, even if the final vote wouldn't take place today, at least, for the developer to show to Mass Housing that there is that willingness to potentially accept that condition. So without further ado, I'll lead it to the developer if there are no other proponents or opponents to this project.
Thank you, Tom. Proponents? Any, anybody else would like to speak? Come up into the podium, speak. Proponents? We're gonna close that side. Opponents? Just state your name, and you can pull that down and pu- put it on. Yep. And just state your name and address.
Maxine Aborski, 46 Wade Park, North Revere. I've lived in the area for many, many years, and, um, the traffic has been, uh, terrible in the last 20 years, which, when the nursing home was there, there wasn't as many as a lot of traffic. Um, I'm, I'm just wondering, um, the original 72 condo owned condos, the seven affordable was included in that? And then if they make the, the additional ones, are they gonna, um, is that part of the remaining condo owner condo units, or are they gonna add to it? I'm just wondering. Because, um, that's a dead-end street, and, um, the traffic is horrible to get out of there. And I've seen the big difference.
We're gonna have someone answer your question.
Thank you.
Please, state your name and address, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, Mike Beno, Broadway Capital. So the total number of units are gonna stay the same, so there's no changes there. It's a total of 72 units, 71 residential and one office space. So that's gonna remain the same. We're just increasing the number of total affordable units from seven to 18 in total.
Thank you very much. Does that answer your question? Thank you. Okay, thank you. Would you like to speak more?
Uh, maybe. I just, I had put a brief presentation together. I don't know if it can be pulled up.
We're still on proponent, opponents. Yeah, we, we closed the proponent side, so.
Okay, it just had a little more detail on the breakdown of the affordability.
I would, I'll, we can reopen it.
Okay.
Okay. Okay, so we'll finish the opponents first, and then we'll reopen the presentation. So opponents, we're on opponents. Anybody else would like to speak? Opponents? Okay, we're gonna shut that side. Sir, you can come up and do your presentation.
Thank you. So this is in reference to application number C22-01-22-063, uh, which was previously approved last year. Um, what we're requesting tonight, or I guess it has to go to a special council, but, uh, or a special meeting, um, a, a modification of the existing special permit. Um, this presentation shows what the current special permit states, which is four units at 60 AMI, two units at 70 AMI, and one unit at 80 AMI, with two, uh, two units with military special preference and two units with senior special preference. What we'd like to do is increase the affordability level to a total, like we said, of 18 units, and the breakdown has shown six units at 70 AMI and 12 units at 80% AMI. And the reason that we're removing the 60% AMI units is because it doesn't allow us to qualify for the grant. Uh, at 60 AMI, they won't support those, those level of afford, that level of affordability. And then in total, we're gonna increase the number of military preference to two to three, and the senior preference from two to three as well. So those would be at the 70% AMI affordability level.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Any opponents, proponents? We're gonna close both sides. Any city councilors? Councilor Sorino?
Thank you, Madam President, and thank you, Maxine Ms. Aborski, for coming up tonight. Uh, you know, we had, we had spoken before. I am in support of this. As Michael had said, this does not change or increase the amount of units. It doesn't change the plan. It doesn't change anything. The only thing it changes is how the units are counted, and it would count toward the city's affordable unit count that we need to meet as a community anyway. Uh, so I, I prefer to see owner-occupied condos count toward that affordability. And regarding the CIT funding, I think, you know, that will be a conversation for subcommittee, but this 100% has my support. And I do, like I said, if, if I thought it was, honestly, if I thought it was going to be detrimental to the North Revere neighborhood, I wouldn't be supporting it. But it's, it literally, it doesn't change the actual project itself, other than how the units are counted. And this will benefit the city more than, than harm the neighborhood. So, thank you.
Thank you, Councilor. Councilor Silvestri?
Thank you, Madam President. Um, Michael, I just wanna commend you and your team for, for taking this route and extending the affordability, expanding the military preference, extend, extending the elderly preference. It's something we need in this community. It's, we need more developers to step up and do. And again, I commend you on it. So thank you very much, and I wish you the best of luck. I support this wholeheartedly.
Thank you, Councilor. Councilor Rizzo?
Thank you very much. Yeah, I mean, this is not altering the scope or size of the project. It's, it's actually giving benefit to people who, I'm assuming, will there be some residence preference? Like people living in Revere? Well, is there some sort of preference there? I know there's veteran preference and senior elderly, um, preference, but will there be preference to people who maybe wanna downsize their homes, but stay in Revere and be able to take advantage of this affordability, um, portion?
So yes, uh, the plan is that there'd be essentially two lottery pools, one for Revere residents only, and then one for outside Revere. And then what would happen would be, um, if the pool, which most likely will be large enough to fill all 18 units, will probably be all Revere residents. What we've seen in other cities is that, uh, the local lottery pool far exceeds the total number of affordable units. We'd expect between 200 to 500 applications for the 18 affordable units, most of which, or half of which would probably be from Revere residents.
Okay, uh, thank you for that. And, um, this question might be for Tom. I'm, I'm not sure. But, um, I understand that we're going to, um, uh, give some relief with, you know, with respect to the Community Investment Trust Fund. And I, I can't see or couldn't imagine you being denied, but in the, I mean, is there, what's the potential for Mass Housing to deny this, uh, this grant? You know, what's coming first? Is the reduction of the Community Investment Trust Fund payment, does that come first? And then the vote on whether or not they get this modification, or?
I think it would be a slam dunk. Okay. Had the vote taken.
I don't know enough about it, to be honest with you.
It's probably still fine. Um, it, it just would have helped to aid in, in the application's competitiveness. But I think, as long as there is a show of local support eventually, I think, I'm sure they could approve it conditionally, and that would, that would come later. I think what I could unequivocally say is if there is no form of local support, Mass Housing wouldn't support it.
Okay, got you. Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilor. Councilor Morabito?
Thanks. So, um, reviewing the paperwork, there's a discrepancy on what we're voting on tonight, what's actually in the special permit application. In the special permit application, it says 71 units, and before us tonight is 72 units.
Well, 71, I'm sorry, it may have been a clarification. Seven, this, in the total development, there's 72 units, because there's one office space that was permitted in the basement, and then 71 total residential units. So one commercial unit and 71 residential units, so 72 units total. I'm not sure if it said 71 or.
Yeah.
72 total or 71 residential.
On the application, it just says 71 units, uh, through you, Madam President, to the clerk. Does that make a difference? I can show you.
Defer to Paul Capizzi.
Madam President, point of information on.
State your point.
On packet page 26, it says here, the application, this was the application we approved in April 2022, it says, uh, "to a 72-unit mixed-use development, consisting of 71 condominium units and one office." So it does have the final count of 72 in the, I don't know, uh, to where Councilor Morabito was referring, but.
So I'm through you. I'm referring to the application number C-23-04 that was filed on August 14th, 2023. It's the City of Revere, Massachusetts, Revere City Council, application for special permit, and it states 71 units on number 10 of the application. I can pass it down if you'd like to see it. That was the only.
Okay.
Concern I had.
Councilor Zambudo?
Thank you, Madam President. Uh, just a couple of things. I'm certainly gonna support this, and I appreciate your, uh, your efforts here. Uh, there are a couple of things, though. We have rules and we have ordinances. One rule is an ordinance that special permits go to committee. Not negotiable. So when I said that tonight, it wasn't because I'm against your project. I'm actually for it. The other thing is, we have an ordinance on this CIT thing, and there's no waiver provision. So I, I know that, uh, we want, we might wanna do that, but I don't believe we can. So that's the two things I need to put on the table. Again, I applaud your efforts. I hope you get the grant. But there are some things we can do, some things we can't do. But we can't change the rules in the middle of the game. We can't have a special permit tonight for you and then tell the other 10 developers that come this time. They, they can't have it because it has to go to committee by ordinance, and that's, that's the way it is. Anyways, uh, I have real concern about the CIT. There's no waiver clause in the ordinance.
Thank you, Councilor. Councilor Visconti?
Uh, thank you, Madam President. Uh, Michael, uh, can you, uh, I, I know Mass, you said there's a Mass Housing grant. How much is the Mass Housing grant that you're applying for, that you qualified? Because that's, that's actually, correct me if I'm wrong, that's subsidizing the difference.
That's correct. That's correct. So it's up to 250 per unit.
250,000?
Per, yeah, 250,000 per build, per Commonwealth builder unit.
Okay, so the difference is, you've calculated it. I, I didn't do it quickly. And, uh, how much are you getting, how much are you applying for, for the grant?
I think it's like a little bit over 4 million in total.
Which is gonna cover the additional money. So I don't, I'm not understanding why we would have to, uh, you know, um, discount the CIT fund, okay, when you're getting subsidized, okay, and that's taking place of the reduction. I know you're not doing it for free. Correct me if I'm wrong, right? Yeah, and it's great that it's being done, and I, you know, I, I encourage that. But why should the city have to sacrifice the, a portion of the CIT fund when you're being refunded by Mass Housing Grant?
Yeah, I think it's really a Mass Housing, it has nothing to do with the developer asking for it or anything like. It's really just some, uh, way that the Mass Housing or the state feels that the city's engaged in the, in the project.
Well, yeah, but that's, we're engaged by accepting the, the change in permit. We shouldn't have to sacrifice the CIT fund, is all I'm saying.
Yeah, there's also this other, other potential ways, maybe waiving a permit fee. I mean, they, they gave me like a list of five or six other options.
Yeah, I, I guess we would like to see all those different options, to see what is in the best interest of the city rather than the developer. No disrespect.
Absolutely, no, I agree.
Thank you.
So if I could just answer that in a bit more detail. So I think there were a few different options proposed. One was to seek home funding from the North Suburban Home Consortium, of which we're a part. Um, this project was deemed ineligible through no fault of the developer's own. He had just already started work at the time where he had submitted for funding, and that, just through HUD regulations, he's declared ineligible because he's taking what's called a choice limiting actions. I could get into detail about that, but I think I would bore everyone in this room. But suffice it to say, he's ineligible for HUD funding, so we couldn't utilize that, um, source of funding. The second source would be waiving permitting fees, but his permitting fees have already been paid, so we can't waive those retroactively. The third option would be CIT, um, or some functional equivalent. And I, I know within CIT, um, the Enabling Clause allows for funding to go towards affordable housing. Um, you could alternatively look at it as a payback to the developer to help support affordable housing that, um, you know, we all, I think at this table, agree is, is dearly needed in the city. I can say, I've been a party to nearly a dozen affordable housing projects, and I can't tell you a single one that the state has approved without showing some form of skin in the game locally. And I, I think we're talking about roughly $85,000 here, which in my view is a small price to pay to, um, increase by 1,800% the number of affordable homeownership units we have in the city. Um, so I hope we can find a way to make that work.
Councilor Sorino?
Thank you, Madam President. Uh, Madam President, through you. Tom, if you could come back, I'm sorry. Just a clarification. I know you kind of glazed over it, but I, I'm having trouble understanding too, what, when you say the, the community has to have skin in the game to show support. If we're, if, if, of course, we're supportive, and we are, you know, by changing the, um, you know, by altering the special permit, why is there like a financial contract? It seems, I'm sorry, it seems kind of like a racket, that in order to accommodate affordable housing, the city needs to give up all their benefits, that, you know, that 85,000 does mean something to my residents here in, you know, in the audience, who are already, you know, uh, who are already, um, when we went through this, part of, when we initially approved it last year, that CIT funding was to benefit the neighborhood. You know, I think that at one point there was talk of, um, something to do with possibly the bike trail and connecting the bike trail on that, that end, um, of Wade Park or whatever that street is. And, long story short, I, I'm just hesitant. I, I would like to see if we could, if, I, I don't understand why we have to do it, but if we have to do it, I would rather see us waive retroactively reimburse some of the permitting fees. I don't think the CIT funding should necessarily have to be sacrificed. I, I wanna help. I wanna support this. I do support it. But I think in order to get there, we need to figure out this CIT issue.
Sure thing. So I think we could look at alternatives and bring that up to the zoning subcommittee. Doesn't need to be CIT, but I think it does need to be more than just a, a nominal show of support. I think when they're at the state level, we have. a nominal show of support. I think when they're at the state level, we have scarce funding to support affordable housing. So when they're looking at applications from across the state, they're going to look at, with more favor on those communities that have helped to contribute to closing the gaps on, on this and other projects. And I know it may come across, or at least it seems as though it's being perceived as simply a developer handout. These projects, the margins on affordable projects are extremely tight. We are by definition constraining the value that the developer can get from this project. And yes, the subsidy does go towards supporting that to a degree. But given the inflationary environment, given where interest rates are, all of those factors combined, it, I mean, talk to anyone you know in the market related to condos in the Boston area. It's a very tough market right now, and every single bit of effort that both the state and we locally can do to support this project will help it get closer to completion. So we'll look at alternatives and we'll make sure to bring that in advance to the next meeting.
I just have to say, Madam President, excuse me for the leeway, just from a high-level standpoint, as a municipal official, and I know you're not Mass Housing, but I just think that is absolutely ridiculous that the, at the local level, where the state is pushing on us to create more affordable housing, which again, I agree with, we need. But to push that on us in terms of giving up other benefits to achieve that is, if anything, the state should be giving us money for developing more housing and, and all the things that we've done in the last 10, 12 years of developing Revere, you know. So I understand, that's, you know, that's my residents frustration, that's my frustration as a municipal official. And I think the state really ought to take a look at that.
Understood. Don't make the rules, I just play by them.
Thank you, Counsel. Counselor Zimbudo.
Thank you, Madam President. I don't want to beat a dead horse, but I've, I get concerned when I hear anybody from the city want to waive our ordinances and rules. Now, during the, during the high school funding scheme, and I call it a scheme because it was, part of it was to take a part of the CIT, which I thought was illegal, to take away from neighborhoods where this money is supposed to go. The CIT is to put back money into the neighborhood that's being harmed in some way, or altered because of these projects. This is a great project. I'm in favor of it 100%, but I'm certainly not in favor of breaking rules and changing rules, because if we do it once, we're going to do it again. And I'm not going to be party to it. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel. Counselor Rizzo.
Yeah, but I mean, basically, just to follow up on everybody talking about the Community Investment Trust Fund, I, you know, if there's other options there, and I couldn't, I couldn't agree more with Counselor Serino. I, you know, we're being pushed. I mean, one of the big issues out there right now is all this housing that we've created over these many years. And, you know, now we have to give up money to allow for more housing, it appears, right? So, I mean, it just seems kind of crazy. But, but to take money out of the Community Investment Trust Fund, if there's other options, you know, take it out of the building permit or whatever. I mean, if there's money that has to go back, take it out of there. Don't take it out of money that would go directly back to the neighborhoods that are impacted by the project. So I think that if you're going to have to give back money to allow for more affordable units, the last place I'd want to take it from is to provide mitigation to the neighborhoods direct, or, you know, like Director Butters, who maybe could benefit from some of that money that's put into the Community Investment Trust Fund. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, Counsel. Counselor Sivestri.
Thank you for the leeway, Madam President. So I guess my question in all this, Mike or Tom, the project was started, we came across this, and did the state say, hey, the city needs to, to give something here? Or was this the developer saying, hey, I want something given here? So, because if, if it's the state saying it, I think there should be room to negotiate. You know, if it's the state saying this, and the developer wasn't against giving CIT funds originally, I don't know what would make it stop it now. Again, he's being-
Yeah, so, so that, we want to pay the CITF fee. I mean, we are not against it in any way. When we came to Tom, we asked him, well, what is, what do you suggest, or what have you seen with other projects? How did we get around this requirement of the Commonwealth builder grant application? How do we show city financial support? It's just one of the requirements of the grant program. Tom suggested, you know, one way, there's multiple ways. I think the best thing to do is take this offline, we'll look at, you know, three or four different ways potentially, and then come back, was to do the CITF, the quickest way. But obviously, it doesn't sound like that's probably in the best, you know, way for the city to, to look, to take money from those funds. So I think we can look at other ways. But there's no, one thing, there's no like financial minimum level that we need to, to support the, the grant program.
Thank you.
And, Mike, excuse, sorry.
Just-
Say, oh, I'm sorry.
Just, never mind.
Counselor Visconti.
Excuse me, Madam President, thank you. Did you just say that there's no minimum? Or is that what I just heard?
Yeah, there, there's no like, in the grant application, Mass Housing does not say, this is the minimum dollar amount that needs to be contributed by the city. However, as Tom alluded to, the, the higher the dollar amount, they look at it as a more favorable support from the city. Is that, is that correct?
That's correct. I think the amount, you know, 85,000, in the context of a $4 million grant, is, I think, pretty reasonable. I think you go lower than that. It, it's all a bit of a guessing game. I'm not going to tell you what the right number is, but I think it's a, a number that's reasonable enough to show that the, the city has skin in the game and has a financial stake in it.
And we can have this discussion in the, in zoning, correct me if I'm wrong, right? But is that, is there a possibility that if we were to give relief, and I'm not sure if that's legal or not, what the situation is, if we give relief to the CIT fund, that he, that the developer can also donate to the Affordable Trust Fund in a separate transaction? So why, I guess my problem is, is like Counselor Serino says, it's the city that is sacrificing. Whether it's a dollar, $80, thousands of dollars, it's always the city. My concern is, is if that's the case, and we have to make some kind of concession, why can't the developer, okay, donate that money that we are conceding into the Affordable Trust Fund as a donation to the Affordable Trust Fund? How's that? Is that, is that something that makes more sense instead of us conceding? And we can show that on the application that we're doing that. But, you know, we shouldn't have to, to concede anything, is all I'm saying. You know, I want the, I want the more affordable. I'm, I'm okay with that. But I, I, I agree with my fellow counselors that I don't think that the CIT fund is always the thing that's being negotiated. And there's a reason for that. And, and that's, that's, that's mitigation for the developer and the city. And it always, the developer always goes to the CIT fund. And I just don't agree with giving that back to the developer. That's all.
Understood. And, and again, my thought process, seeing that it was within the enabling statute of CIT to allow for affordable housing, I, I thought that was a direct and clear connection. But I take your point, and I think there's different ways we can make that contribution. Again, I think if we were stronger in our commitment to affordable housing development as a city, we wouldn't have 7.2% of our stock being affordable, a number that is dropping every day. If we want to support affordable housing, we can't just stand up here and say we support it. We need to put our money where our mouth is respectfully as a community. I think this is one way we can do it, but I think there's plenty of other ways we can. And I think we should do our best to make an earnest effort to help solve this affordable, affordability crisis we have as a city.
Any other counselors? We're going to refer this to zoning.
Calendar item number eight. Hearing called is ordered on the application of Yusef Abourjali Karav Tuma and Elias Realty Group, requesting a special permit from the Revere City Council to expand and alter an existing non-conforming structure by constructing a second-story, 1,064 square-foot addition for storage space at 570 Broadway, Revere, Mass.
This is a public hearing. Proponents, state your name and address, please, for the record.
Okay, try it again. Joseph Luna, Principal Luna Design Group Architects. We are located at 100 Conifer Hill Drive, Suite 406 in Danvers.
I'm the owner of property. My name is Yusef Abourjali. I live on 3 N Over Street in Peabody.
Okay. Okay, once again, Madam President, City Council, my name is Joseph Luna. And again, I'm here on behalf of Yusef Abajari of Tuma and Elias Realty Group. We were not the original architects on this project. Project was originally designed in 2019 by SAA Design, but now we are assuming project responsibilities. Our project is located at 570 Broadway in the GB District, which the building is a single-story Domino's Restaurant with smaller takeout Colombian restaurant, El Panal II. The building is pre-existing non-conforming for side and rear yard setbacks, and the proposed project involves construction of a second-floor storage space above the existing takeout restaurant with an added area of 1,040 feet, square feet. The space will be used exclusively for storage, will be accessed by a stair on the north side of the building. There will be no patron use and no effect on parking. We're requesting a special permit underneath Section 1714.030 for an alteration for pre-existing non-conforming structure. It's a relatively straightforward project. We're building on top of the existing footprint, no patron use, no effect on parking, with access at the exterior with, through, through an exterior stairway. Be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any other proponents? Okay, we're going to close that side. Opponents, any other, any opponents would like to speak? We're going to close that side. Any city counselors? Counselor Sivestri. Counselor Cogliandro.
Thank you, sorry, Counselor. So I've, I've been in contact with Yusef, the property owner, I've also been in contact with the residents in the area. There was some misunderstanding with what was going on. They originally thought that they were putting a second floor in the restaurant, but that is not the case. It's in the special permit that they are only using this for storage. In fact, in the back of the building, they have in a pod where they're storing things now. And if they take that pod out, they'll open up a one or two spots, I think it was.
That's correct.
Which, and, you know, one of the complaints on coming's have is that people park going to businesses, which I think we all have that issue on a lot of side streets near business areas. But this is going to alleviate some of that issue. And if Yusef has done other projects, I, I would direct your attention to Geo's Liquors. I think we all know what that building used to look like, and this gentleman made it look beautiful. So I, I know we're not voting on this tonight. It is going to go into subcommittee. All I would ask in the meantime is if, I know you did send letters to the Abutters, I thank you for that. If you could reach back out to them, the small issue of the height, maybe there's something you guys can work out there. But I do think that the neighborhood is overall happy that it's not going to be more, more seating. That's all. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Sivestri.
Thank you, Madam President. What, what is actually going to be stored up there? Is this going to be used for the, the restaurants that exist, and then they get to use storage above them? Or is this going to be separate storage for?
It's for direct restaurant storage.
Okay, so, so this is going to be directly for Domino's and, and the other restaurant?
No, no.
It's not just, it's just for the Colombian restaurant?
Just for the Colombian takeout restaurant.
Okay. And what is, what will be stored up there? Will there be refrigerators? Will there be?
Yeah, it could be used for refrigerators or, you know-
Dry goods.
Dry goods.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Counsel. Counselor Rizzo.
Thank you very much, Madam President. I, I looked at the permit application, and I can tell you right off the bat, and especially on the heels of what Counselor Cogliandro just said, the ward counselor down there that I know always does his homework and talks with the residents and neighbors, it doesn't appear as though there's a problem on that end. On my end, just purely looking at the application, I, I can't think of a business who really doesn't need more storage space. You could go up and down Broadway, you can go throughout the city. There's probably very few that would say they couldn't use more storage space. And so this is having, actually, it's having a positive impact as I see it, because you're opening up a couple more parking spaces, which we all know is at a premium here in the city. So as it stands right now, I, I am in complete support of it. And I think it's going to actually make life a little easier for all of, all of the businesses that currently exist there, especially El Panal. So, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Any other counselors? We're going to refer this to zoning.
Okay, thank you.
Calendar item number nine. Communication from the acting mayor vetoing the following motion unanimously approved by the city council, 8-0, 2 absent, pursuant to the legal opinion received by Anderson and Krieger LLP, dated August 24th, '23, relative to the power and authority of the acting mayor, that the acting mayor immediately cease and desist taking actions admitting of delay resulting in permanent appointments or hires.
Counselor Cogliandro.
Thank you, Madam President. I, this is a little concerning. The, the council, and I, I'm just going to speak for myself, I don't know if anyone else experiences this, but most of the time when we file a motion, we really don't hear anything about it. This was a rare occasion where it was a serious issue where the council actually voted unanimously. And I'm, I don't understand why it's being sent back as a veto and why it just wasn't left out to die with the rest of the motions. So I, I just don't, I don't understand this. I'm going to be voting to overturn the veto tonight, and I hope the council will do, do the same with me, because we all stood together and did this. And I'm not, again, I'm not really sure why this is here in this form. So thank you.
Any other counselors?
Point of information, just for-
State your point.
Just for clarification to the counselor, if the mayor's, mayor's office does not make a comment on a motion that's approved through the city council, I believe the clerk can correct me if I'm wrong, within 10 days, it automatically is considered approved unless they veto it. Correct?
In this case, the acting mayor vetoed the motion that was approved by the city council.
Any other counselors? Counselor Zimbudo.
So I'm, I'm just going to make a quick comment here. I dare say that if I took 100 of the best municipal attorneys and had them read these two opinions, the one that we voted unanimously on from Anderson Krieger, 97 of those attorneys would vote for that second opinion, and three would vote for the first opinion. It's that far off on the law. It's not even close. And it's really a moot point. But, I mean, the fact that the acting mayor is veto, vetoing this is beyond absurd. And I, I would hope that the people that voted to cease and desist would simply overturn the veto. But at this point, I, you know, it is, it is a moot point. But on the law, the second opinion is the correct law.
Counselor Sivestri.
Yes, thank you, Madam President. I'm not sure about 100 lawyers or any of that stuff. I know we got two opinions. I know both opinions differ. I know we voted unanimously on one, and I know the mayor, acting mayor vetoed what we voted. That's politics. If we're going to overturn it, and he's going to veto again, and we're going to play political volleyball back and forth with this, I just, I don't understand.
Counselor Visconti.
Madam President, can somebody just explain the process of the, if we were to vote on the veto, okay, to overturn that? Can somebody explain to the council what that, yeah, I, I'm sorry, city, ma-
Madam Clerk.
Madam Clerk, would you explain that?
Sure. So the city council has the ability, once a veto message comes back to the city council, the city council can either pass the matter over the mayor's objections or not pass it.
Okay, and, and how many votes does it need?
It requires a two-thirds vote.
A two-thirds vote to not pass- A two-thirds vote to not pass that? Is that, when I'm on, what would be the?
The motion, if there is a motion, if someone makes a motion, shall this matter be passed over the acting mayor's objections?
Counselor Rizzo.
Thank you, Madam President. I, I mean, I would certainly, I would certainly go along with a veto override, but I think it's, the sad part is, it's kind of a moot point at this, at this point, you know, where six weeks away from a general election, I don't know, you know, I mean, it would certainly send a signal that we're in disagreement, and I don't have a problem with that whatsoever. I, I talked to an attorney, just a regular attorney in town, and one that I respect, and they said just basic law books would have concurred with the decision that, that the opinion that the City Council received was the correct one. Again, I'm not an attorney, so I can't say for sure. I'm just saying what this one attorney said, that, you know, only appointments really, in the case of an emergency, should have occurred. I mean, that was pretty clear, and I thought it was pretty clear to all of us, but yet that wasn't the case, and I think that was what was getting members of the City Council upset. You know, you can't abuse your position. So, but I am willing to go along with the override, you know, but where it's gonna go is a practical matter. I really don't know. We're on to a new election, and, but I totally understand where Counselor Cogliandro is coming from, and I would be supportive, so, thank you very much, Madam President.
Counselor Cogliandro.
Thank you for the leeway, Madam President. Just one more point. I mean, we've, we've dealt with a lot this term. I mean, a lot, and this is the only one that's come back as a veto, and I wanna know why, and there's nobody here to talk on it, and it just doesn't sit right with me. And I don't, again, I don't care who's in what seat. It's not about that for me. It just doesn't sit right with me, and I wanna know what's going on, and again, there's no one here to explain this. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Any other councillors? So, Madam Clerk. So, we could-
Our motion to override the veto.
Second it. Oh, road call?
Shall this matter be passed over the acting mayor's objections? Counselor Cogliandro?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Morbeto?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Novoselsky is absent. Counselor Powers? Yes. Counselor Rizzo?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Sorino?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Silvestri?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Visconti?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Zambudo?
Yes.
Yes. And President Protet McKenna?
Yes.
Yes. This, that, the, it's been override, and the motion passes. Calendar item number 10, motions, motion presented by Counselor Cogliandro that the City Council request a representative from RCN, Comcast, and Verizon to appear before the City Council to discuss poll number 1036.
Counselor Cogliandro.
So, poll 1036 is what started this, but I seem to be getting the runaround again from these three companies. The poll needs to be fixed. The wiring is all tangled up. You call RCN, they tell you they're not next to move. You call Comcast, they tell you they're not next to move, so it must be Verizon, right? Nope, they're not next to move either. So, I would like them to come before us, and we can use this as a starting point. I'm sure all the other ward councils, even the at-large councils, have issues like this as well, so, thank you.
Any other councillors? Counselor Zambudo.
I'd like to know what happened to the schedule. We used to have a scheduled visit from these utilities. Did that just somehow die off, or was it a summer recess, or can we get them back?
Try emailing National Grid again. I did not receive a response from Tammy. She indicated to me in an email, probably a couple months ago, that she wanted to have all utility parties together, and I have not heard anything back after a couple of attempts.
I get it, 'cause, 'cause they're very responsive to me when I call them. That's why I'm saying this, and I'll gladly call them again if we wanna have a meeting, and I don't, I don't see any reason why they wouldn't come up, unless we're bringing them up here just to beat them up. If we actually want to get answers to these questions, then that's the proper way to do it. But if we're gonna tell them we're not giving them any more permits until they take down all the double poles, and then we're back to where we were 20 years ago. We made a lot of progress with double poles over the years that I've been here, and I'd like to get back to that progress.
That, through you, Madam President, that's not why I want them to come up here. I wanna establish communication so that they stop giving, you know, ward councils and all the councillors the runarounds, and that's exactly what I just received from these companies, and they just keep passing the buck to the other one. The pole's moving. When the wind blows, there's a double pole pinned to it, and it's moving. I told them it was an emergency, but apparently it's nobody's problem, and that's why I want them to come here so we can talk about it, not so we can remove their permits.
No, and, and, Madam President, and I agree, but there's a system, and, and that's how we get the answers. When they're up here, we bring up a certain poll, and they tell us what's next to come off that poll, and that's how this, I just don't know how this went off the rails, because we were doing real well with it, and something has, something has blocked it now. So, let's get back to it.
Thank you, Counselor Sorino.
Great motion, by the way. Thank you, Madam President. Madam President, through you to Counselor Cogliandro, could we add National Grid? Because in the language of the motion, it doesn't read National Grid.
Absolutely.
Thank you. And to respond to my dear friend, Counselor Zambudo, the system is broken with regard to this, because the problem is, is that when they do come up, when National Grid or other utilities come up, I have to be honest, Comcast and Verizon have always been very responsive to me when I, when I need them, but National Grid in particular, the only leverage that we have is when they come up because they want something, because when they come up for various, you know, requests of private property owners, that's the only time we see their faces, and we, it's the same story every time they come up and they want, you know, to put a conduit underground or whatnot. We give them a litany of issues, and they say, oh, we'll look into it, we'll, you know, we'll pass it on, and it never happens. I'm still waiting, three years, three years, for streetlights to be brightened on, at Sully's Curve on Salem Street, and Ms. Aborski, you would know that that street is treacherous, and National Grid, I put that request in years ago. I don't mean to get off topic, but I pass that along here when National Grid comes for other stuff, and it still doesn't get resolved. So, I, I disagree with Counselor Zambudo that when they do come up, it's the only leverage we have is to deny them when they, what they want. So, they need to start coming back, and we need to figure out a way. I know that Tammy, with all, you know, has kind of blown off the city clerk, with all due respect, but the city clerk has done her due diligence to try to get these people in front of us, and they, they just don't care, and it needs to stop. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Counselor. Any other councillors? Counselor Powers.
Yes. I can recall when we used to see, receive a schedule, maybe once a month, on polls, what needed to come off those polls. In most cases, it was fire alarm, and that helped an awful lot, because we could identify their work schedule as well as what we wanted. I had a pole down on Bell Circle, overhanging, just about overhanging on the train tracks down there, and I yelled about it. I yelled about it. Finally, they, they had a, they had to get a, some type of a situation with the MBTA, Mass., whatever they call themselves, to allow for the train to be stopped at certain periods, so they can do the work, and it worked out fine. But I, I kind of liked the schedule, so we know exactly what's up there and what has to come down. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Any other councillors? All in favor? All opposed? So ordered.
Calendar item number 11, motion presented by Counselor Cogliandro that the acting mayor direct the chief of police to increase patrols at the intersection of Blaney Street, Coolidge Street, and Constitution Avenue. Drivers are not stopping at the stop signs nor abiding by the do not enter signs.
Counselor Cogliandro.
Thank you, Madam President. The motion pretty much speaks for itself, but just to add, I've, I've also put in tickets for some additional signage in that area. They, they do need some stop signs there. All good. That's it. Thank you.
Excuse me, Counselor, can I jump on that motion with you? Yeah.
Absolutely, Counselor Powers.
Yeah, I'm talking about Sagamore Street. It seems to be, every other car that goes through there, it's not only going through, but they're going through at a, what's not, I consider a safe rate of speed. They're just flying through, and for, I'd like, at the next council meeting, there'll be requests for 15 new illumination systems for stop signs in the city. So, that's a good thing, but I, I think we need more enforcement out there. If we have to write tickets, so be it. We'll get part of that money back in Chelsea Court. That's the way to do it. You have to hit somebody on the hands before they realize that, you know, something has to be required. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Any other councillors? All in favor? All opposed? So ordered.
Calendar item number 12, motion presented by Counselor Cogliandro that the acting mayor direct the superintendent of Revere Public Schools to work collaboratively with the Election Department and City Council to ensure that polling locations located in schools are empty of staff and students on November 7, 23, the day of the general election.
Counselor Cogliandro.
Thank you, Madam President. So, I, you know, we had, we had the school department have professional development during the primary election, and I know that, you know, there was, they did make some changes towards the end, but even, even busing teachers from other schools and still created GM'd parking lots in other schools. Ward one, we have the Beachmont School. Ward two, we use the Garfield. Ward three, all of Ward three goes to the high school. The Hill School for Ward four, Paul Revere for Ward five, and then, you know, the, the Western Revere complex, they call it, or the SBA for Ward six, right? So, we use a lot of schools, and having the parking lots filled up, you know, that's, I guess at the end of the day, this is all about trying to get people to come and more comfortably vote. If people drive by and see a full parking lot, they don't wanna, they don't, they might not wanna stop. They're gonna keep driving, so if, you know, I, the superintendent was, was great in making the changes. We got additional parking at the high school. She did add the busing. I really appreciate that, but if we could maybe work to not have professional development that day, or have everybody Zoom from their home for the day, that would hopefully increase the chances of more people coming out and making the important choice to vote. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Rizzo.
Yeah, this, I don't, I don't even know where to start with this motion. This, it was really, at all of the locations that school buildings were utilized as polling precincts, it was a nightmare most of the day. I know people who personally drove in and drove out. I know people who drove in, couldn't find where to, where to go. We absolutely 100% need to do better. I mean, we have at most maybe two elections a year. I mean, for two days, can we, you know, accommodate people who wanna exercise their right to vote? A lot of seniors driving around looking for spaces, it was completely unnecessary in my mind. Didn't have to happen that way. I could go on and on, but I am hopeful that the Election Commissioner will get personally involved, along with the acting mayor, to make sure that people who wanna go out and vote on Election Day don't have to, you know, drive around aimlessly to find a parking space, figure out where they're going. It's just, it was just kinda ridiculous, and I wish we had a better grip on this prior to September 19th, but now we're going forward to November 7th, and I wanna thank Counselor Cogliandro for this motion. Hopefully, this isn't vetoed. Thank you very much.
Any other councillors? Counselor Morbeto.
Yeah, let me just. You like that, huh? So, let me let you know about my experience on Election Day. So, we had, I witnessed an elderly lady who was coming down, walking down School Street, 'cause that's where she lived. She walked all the way through the front of the high school building, where they normally vote with the superintendent's offices. She walked all the way behind the back of the building to the gymnasium, and then she was considered an inactive voter, but she didn't have her license on her. So, she had to walk back all the way around the building, go back home, get her license, and, you know, she had a cane, and I felt really, really bad. So, these are the examples that we wanna prevent. I, I do believe the voting location at that high school got moved last minute, or the, where they vote. Was it always in the gymnasium?
No, no, it was not.
No, it wasn't in the front.
The, the voting at the high-
Point of information, point of information. It used to be in the superintendent's area.
Yes.
And, and that was before Paul, and, and now, since they've been voting, it's been in the gymnasium.
Gymnasium, yeah. So, who said it, yeah, it was in the gymnasium?
The polling location, point of information.
Did I not just say that?
No, you, you said it was moved last minute. It was always in the fieldhouse. I just wanted to clarify.
State your name and address, please.
Madam President, Paul Fahy, Election Commissioner. Just on the point about the polling location, previously to the redistricting, Precinct 533 did vote in that lobby area that you're describing. However, subsequent to the reprecincting, all of Ward three has voted at that fieldhouse entrance at Revere High School. I think that's where there's some confusion. Both things are true. There was, in fact, voting, and we have had, we have done a lot to communicate, and I know the counselor is well aware, 'cause we've talked a lot about this, to communicate to individuals about the fact that the location has changed. We've put new signs, we've put new signs up all along that route. We've, we've reached out to folks to let them know that, and Counselor Morbeto, the example you gave is a sad one. On a quick aside, you know, we have a lot of inactive voters, despite a lot of effort that has been made to get people to respond to their census, they simply continue, a lot of folks just simply continue not to do that, so that's something we wanna work on. I'm happy to speak to this if the council wishes. If not, I'll stand down.
Any other councillors? Counselor Zambudo, you said you wanted to speak, but?
No, well, I, I wanted to commend the maker of the motion, but I agree that there is no way there should have been a professional development day on Election Day. I don't care, you know, they, they made a, a real effort to help with the parking towards the end of it, but it shouldn't have been there in the first place, and, and, you know, we have, we have all these schools where people have to vote, and, and I think Counselor Rizzo said it, but, you know, it's one or two days a year. We should be able to accommodate the voters, and, and whatever that takes, we need to do it. So, I think it was a great motion, and I, hopefully, we've learned from that September 19th, and we move forward.
Thank you. Any other councillors? Counselor Visconti?
Thank you. Uh, thank you, Madam President. My only recommendation to Mr. Fahy would be to maybe do a little bit more outreach for Counselor Cogliandro's ward, because there were a lot of people that weren't aware that it was in the back, and, you know, just holding signs out there. They didn't know where to go. It was pretty confusing, so, because they, they did come out, and, you know, a lot of residents that were walking around didn't know where to vote, so if you can try to amend or try to, you know, do a little bit more outreach during that day, you know, that would be probably helpful to the residents.
We have had, this is the third election that we've had in that location, and every time, we continue to do signage. I know Counselor Cogliandro has done outreach within the community, so we'll continue to work on that. I did wanna just share one bit of information, if the council indulge. I did have a conversation with the superintendent about this. I do think we did not know about this until a few days before the election. I think that we have a very good collaborative relationship with the school department, because as counselors have said, we use the schools for a lot of polling locations, and I think as far as the signage and the, the parking setup was, was better. But I did speak with her. They are going to be doing an event in November, but it will be a virtual event, so I think that information has been received. be a virtual event, so I think that information has been received for the future. So, I just wanted to share that. Thank you.
Great, thank you very much. All in favor, all opposed, so ordered.
Calendar item number 13, motion presented by President Protet McKenna that the acting mayor request the traffic commission and Mast dot to reconfigure the signalization in pedestrian light at the intersection of Winthrop Avenue and Revere Beach Parkway. For traffic continuing on Winthrop Ave towards Beachmont, the pedestrian signal turns red when the traffic light turns red for traffic continuing on Revere Beach Parkway towards the beach. This is causing major traffic backups on Winthrop Avenue. The pedestrian signal should remain green until activated, allowing traffic to flow towards Beachmont.
So, this speaks for itself. This has been a problem for the last couple of months, and it really, the motion speaks for itself. Thank you. All in favor, all opposed, so ordered.
Late communication, calendar item number 14, communication from the election commissioner requesting approval of the revised early voting schedule for the regular minutes of the election.
Madam President, Paul Fahey, election commissioner. I thank the council for taking this as a late communication, and I apologize for the fact it is late. I did not get a chance to submit it before the election, so thank you for taking it up. We've had this conversation, when we originally set the early voting schedule, the modified city hall hours were only going to be in effect until the end of September, so when I originally had you consider this, they were based on the, on an assumption that we would go back to the previous five-day schedule, which we are not doing at least until the end of the year. So, I just wanted to make sure that we did not publicize the early voting hours without getting council approval for the modification. So, the only change is, we will start them on October 21st, we will have two weeks, as we discussed, of early voting, we will have two weekends of early voting, and then the weekday schedule will reflect the city hall schedule. So, that's the only change. If the council approves this tonight, we'll post it and share this information with the community first thing tomorrow, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any councilors? Councilor Cogliandro.
Thank you, Madam President. Mr. Fahey, thank you. You don't by any chance happen to have those dates with you now, do you?
I can tell you what they are, if you'd like-
We can do it after then.
Yeah, so basically, the 21st and 22nd is a weekend, that'll be 10 to 2 here in the chamber. Starting on the 23rd, it'll be 23, 24, 25, 26, regular city hall hours, so extended hours on Monday and Wednesday. The following weekend, 10 to 2 both days, and then the following week, same schedule. So, we'll be here every day except for Fridays, which is something that I think our group is happy to have a day off in the last two weeks. Thank you.
Any other councilors? Councilor Serena? Okay. All in favor, all opposed, so ordered.
No further business, Council President.
Councilor Serena has a point of personal privilege.
Thank you, Madam President. Madam President, on behalf of the nine other members of the city council, I just wanted to extend a warm welcome back to Councilor Powers. It's good to have you in the chamber, John. We're happy to see you back, and just welcome back.
Thank you, Counselor. To add a little bit of humor to it, there's an old saying that General McCarthy used, old soldiers never die, they just fade away.
Thank you, Councilor Powers. Councilor Silvestri.
Yes, thank you, Madam President. As I spoke earlier about the heartbreak we are feeling, we are all grieving, but right next to sadness in the grief process is anger, and I have to be honest, I'm a bit infuriated. I'm angry because the system that we all speak about failed, Chris. It's no secret that the stigma is the biggest barrier to speaking to people seeking mental health and substance use support. When we blur the lines between help and punishment, it causes shame, which leads to guilt, and ultimately also isolation, and then we have sad outcomes. We all failed, Chris. From the failed policies to the stigma that continues to exist, we need to understand what led to this tragedy that we're grappling with today, and we need to ensure that we do not make this mistake again in the future. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Counselor, and thank you for your participation in tonight's meeting. The Revere City Council now stands adjourned until Monday, October 16th. Have a, have a great day. Bye.